Call the meeting to order of the Marlington Local School District Board of Education Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphries?
Here.
Mrs. Kropko?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Swift?
Here.
Reading of the mission statement. In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student. Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the following agenda for April 19th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropko?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
Public participation. Are there any requests to speak publicly?
I received no request.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We have a presentation tonight from Mr. Dan Swisher. Dan is our pupil services director and other duties. So, Dan, you might want to turn, I think he has a PowerPoint for us.
Good evening. I'm Dan Swisher. I'm the pupil service director for Marlington Local Schools. I've been with our district for about 18 years. Those of you who know me, I was principal at Washington Elementary for some years, been a principal at the middle school. And the last five years, I've been our pupil service director. A little bit more, the role has expanded a little bit more this year. So I'm going to go through that to make sure, you know, the board asked for an update and kind of what pupil service is about. So that's kind of the direction I went with this presentation. Who we are. So we're talking about pupil service, kind of what we're doing. We're the special education side of Marlington Local Schools. We're the 504s. We're K-12 testing for the entire school district. Title III, which is our English learners. We are home instruction, homeless and foster care, nursing, COVID-related services, which is our PSYCS, our SLPs, our OTs, PTs, and audiology, our paraprofessionals, our preschool, and then other support that I, that we can give to the superintendent, the treasurer, the curriculum director. So when we're talking about special education, we're not a small district, and we're not a large district. We're right in the middle. That's kind of where Marlington has always been. Our numbers fluctuate year to year, but in general, we have about 228 students that are on IEPs, okay? Thirty-one of those students in IEPs are open enrolled in. Nine of those students on IEPs are court placed in. Thirty-three of those students in IEPs are open enrolled out. We have 19 students that are educated outside of our district. The example would be EA, which is Educational Alternatives, Lake Center Christians, Southgate, Super Learning Center, Day Elementary, Lewisville, Success Academy, and Golden Key. And we have about 115 students on 504s. Twenty-one of those kids are open enrolled in, four of those are court placed in, and then 10 of those are open enrolled out. So when we're talking about that, it's roughly our district's, let's say, 2,000 students is a rough average of where we're at right now. We're at about 12% of our students are on IEPs. That's a good number to be at. The state kind of monitors that. We go too high, our district gets a name. You know, so it's kind of one of those, it's kind of a cat and mouse game with trying to find the right way to identify students, service students in the right manner, and how we target those students. So when we're talking about special education and 504s, that's kind of where we're at on numbers. Obviously, if you have questions about that at the end, please let me know. If you stop me anytime, if you have specific questions about are court placed in, are out of districts, are in districts, things like that. When we're talking about students that are open enrolled in, 31 students, most of the time, when we're talking about open enrollment students that come from other areas, schools to our district, they don't usually come in with IEPs. It's just they come in, say kindergarten. All right, we'll say we get 20 kids that are open enrolled in for kindergarten, which is great for our district. Over the course of time, if some of those kids just continue to, the gap just continues to grow as they get older, they might qualify for that. So when I say 31, it just kind of, and some do enroll, and that's fine. If we can service, that's not a problem. But that's where we're at.
What does 504 mean?
So 504, so if you're talking about a kid on, a kid that's on an IEP, they have what we would call a specific disability, say in reading, written expression, mathematics, and there's other disabilities that fall underneath that. There's other health impaired, there's speech. A 504 can be somebody that, let's just say they have, there's different, there's different ways to look at it. Let's say you broke your arm or your hand, and you're out for six, eight weeks. We might put you on a 504 because we have to give you some type of accommodation for the classroom. Let's say you're ADD or ADHD, that has, that's affecting your concentration, your ability to do something. It doesn't necessarily qualify you as having a learning disability. It's just, it's just, it's a hindrance based on the diagnosis from a medical professional. So when a medical professional comes in and says, hey, we have this, we can go the option of a 504. The major difference between a student on an IEP and a 504, if you want to look at it from a funding standpoint, is we do get some type of additional funding for students on IEPs depending on the category, okay? But on the other hand of it, on a 504, we do not. But they still need serviced.
But if you have a 504 student on a 504, they're not going to school.
So we still would. So we would still do that. So we were required to homeschool.
How does that affect funding at all?
It's our fund. It's all on, it's all on, it's all on Marlington Local School District. Paraprofessionals. We have 17 paraprofessionals in Marlington Local School District. We have four paraprofessionals through the Stark County ESC. Okay, so just so you know, when I think about paraprofessionals, they provide, I just put a quick definition. Instructional, to provide instruction to behavior, other classroom support to students inside and outside of the classroom. They can work one-on-one, they can work in small groups. These are, like, some of you might relate to them and call them aides, or student aides, or classroom aides, or this or that. I call them paraprofessionals. They are, they are licensed to be able to work with students. So there's a little bit more additional certification than just saying, getting a background check, and I can go do that. They're instrumental, the things that we do in our district. All right, and, you know, some of them are very tied to specific students. Because their disability is so severe, they have to have support. Some are tied to our units, where we have kids that have very low disability, so we have to have them in there by law. Then others are tied to classrooms because when you get 25, 27, 30 kids in a classroom, and you get a few that are, you know, struggling, that they may not be on an IEP, or they may have some behaviors, they're there to support that so the teacher can continue to move forward. So we do have those. So if you talk about paraprofessionals, at a cost, that is, that's what that is. Preschool. We do have preschool. Now, we run our preschool in collaboration with the Stark County ESC. Okay, we have two classrooms right now currently at Lexington Elementary. We have two AM preschool skip classrooms, and we have two PM skip classrooms. So they call it the Stark County Integrated Preschool. That's what skip means, okay? Which basically means that we service IEP students in those classrooms, and we service typical kids, classmates, is what they call them. So currently, we have 24 students on IEPs served in our preschool classrooms. These students are age four, they might be five now, but they could be age three, four, or five. You know, you know, they're just, they're not kindergarten age, yet. We have four students on IEPs served itinerately. That just means that they don't attend our preschool, but we have somebody that actually goes to their home or a different location and helps them. All right? We have 26 classmates currently in our preschool, preschool program right now that attend with our students on IEPs. Now, we have 57 total children on our waitlist. So we have 57. Now, these are Marlington-only kids. We do not accept any open enrollment in our preschool program. All right, only Marlington students attend our preschool. So we do maybe have a kid that, it's a teacher that has a young child that would attend our preschool. If that works into our thing, we do have that. But 99% of our students are all Marlington students. Fifty-seven kids on a waitlist right now for classmates' class. We have 57 kids out there that are either not in preschool, or they're going somewhere else, but they would like to be here. We have 44 four-year-olds in that group, 13 three-year-olds. Next year, we're going to have 27 openings. So we're still going to have a waitlist, and then what other three-year-olds that come in.
Does that make any, does it make any sense to expand that, or limitations in what we can do?
That's, there's no limitations in what the district can do, but it's all a cost. I don't think, years ago, I did a cost analysis on preschool with a previous treasurer, and there's never, Patty and I have not done a cost analysis. When you break down the, what, at the end of the day, I've never seen it where preschool makes money. All right, preschool's got, the reason for preschool is obviously get our kids ready, so we're not running into the issues that cost money for our students down the road. And, you know, the bulk, the ESC, obviously, with our contract, uses a bulk of that money for preschool costs. At the same time, it doesn't cover those costs, solve those costs. I mean, it's preschool costs.
Do you evaluate children before they come into the school? Are any of the teachers involved in that evaluating when they enter preschool? You know, I mean, you might have said it's way beyond preschool, you know, and maybe not, not ready to be there when they have a, that's, you know, be so, so severe autism, he can't, he can't be in that environment, kind of, as, you know, how, how would they evaluate people? Like, you know, say my daughter, there's, you know, you don't want to send her there.
No, and that's a great question. I will, it's, I don't want to, I don't want to hold up all that. I will talk to you when this is over, and I'll just kind of run that for you. But I can answer that pretty easy. So you're good. That makes sense. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, excuse me. This, we're not going to take questions. This is a presentation. That's okay. That's all right.
I will wait and answer any questions you have after me. Not a problem. Sorry about that. I apologize. Testing. Other pupil services are, I'm the district testing coordinator. So K-12, this kind of encompasses a good portion of things that are going on. So basically, in coordination with myself, with the support of the special service secretary, in support of the administrators, staff, our TAs, I can't just tell you, it's a lot of people that go involved in this. But we do have to direct all the state testing. That includes our state tests that we're taking now, OALPA tests, which is our student, for our English learners, MAP testing, which is kind of a diagnostic test that you've heard Ms. Kaylee talk about, ACT, KRA, our kindergarten entrance exam to kind of see where they're at, COGATS for our gifted, WebX for our vocational alternative assessment test that's for students with disabilities on the lower side, anything that's mandated by the state. And these are, and a lot, most of these are mandated by the state. All right, these aren't things that Marlington says, hey, let's choose to test kids. You know, this is things that the state has committed, which is, a lot has changed in the last 18 years for testing-wise, which is just more demand on kids. And that just kind of summarizes kind of that portion of it. Title III, that's our English learners. I just put a quick synopsis, in case you did not know what Title III was when we're talking about that. 1965, it was, it was part of the Elementary Secondary Act, which they called ESSA. 2015, they switch it to the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is still ESSA. The purpose of, the purpose of Title III is really to help those English learners attain English proficiency and meet our state standards. So how many do we have currently? We currently have 11. Now, that number grows and goes down. As if most of you know, we do have a migrant population, that we do run a migrant school in the fall. We also run one in the summer. On average, we've seen numbers as high as 50 or 60 kids in that program down to 35. Okay, so that just depends on how many migrate up from Georgia to Florida, or out of, out of the country and choose to work. Okay, so those, those, those numbers are there, but they're, April's about the time we start seeing a return. So we have about 11 right now. And if you want more specific information, it's on our website. And I kind of put the link there, but it's there under that tab. We also, under the pupil service thing, we do homeless and foster care. All right, I know there's a lot there. I'm just going to summarize the fact that by law, the district has to have a homeless liaison or a foster care liaison. Every district has to have them. It's just to help identify those students and help support them in any way possible. Okay, McKinley-Vento Act requires that. So currently, right now, we have seven homeless students. I think that number is probably going to go up to 10 this week. So we do have them in Marlington. Okay, and, you know, we, so it's, it becomes, it becomes very hard on our family, and we have two very good family support specialists. That's what FSS means. And they kind of work with me, and they work with those families. They, they are the connection to their support. I'm going to be honest, you know, they're, they're who I go to because they already have the connection within the school. So they're just amazing. And then obviously, foster care kids. We currently have 18 foster care students placed in our district. Okay, so foster care kids are placed by the courts. We have no control over them. We also have 26 of our own foster, 26 of our own placed out of our district. So think about that. Our district, we have 26 kids that are Marlington. So we got to kind of track all those. So all those have to be kind of tracked in what we do. Nursing services. So we do have two part-time nurses that equates to one nurse. All right, so that's just how it works. We, we do do a contract with Stark County Health Department for our nursing services. They do a lot. They work with our staff members, administrators, students, parents, community. All right, they got to make sure that, you know, they got to maintain all the state immunization records, the vision records, hearing requirements. There's a lot of requirements that have to be done. It's required. It's their job to track it. Then you got the additional duty. They have to work with the COVID coordinator. It happened to be me this year. So we, you know, they had to work with me, and then every administrator, and then the staff to go through the regulations, which we, as we know, change every month. And then there was, then obviously, I had specific paperwork that had to be turned in to Stark County Health Department, to give you the idea there. Related services, just so you know what that means. We're talking about them. So we have psychologists that, we have two full-time psychologists that have, that work with all our kids, K through 12, which every three years, they have to be evaluated by law. SLPs is your speech and language pathologist. So we have two and a half of those. And then everything else, we contract through the county. Because we don't have enough of the specific student with those, that need that service, that would require us to pay for that much money for somebody. So it's billable hours. So that's your OTs, your occupational therapy, your, your physical therapies, your PT, audiologies, your hearing, obviously the vision, interpreting services when we need it. And those are all shared services through the ESC, which I'm extremely thankful for because it would be very hard to find all of those pieces of the puzzle, and then try to pay for those as an individual basis. Finally, wrapping up, you know, our job is to support the superintendent, treasurer, curriculum director, all in one. We're on the same office. So I work with Dr. Mike on a lot of matters pertaining to the student, staff, and administrators. I mean, him and I probably meet every day at minimum. I work with Ms. Kaylee to support her needs of the district. You know, she's done a great job. It's my job to support her in any way possible. And it all ties together when you're talking about, you know, special services and different things like that. Patty and I meet quite often. There are specific grants that get tied to pupil services. IDEA money, Title III money for the English learners, some safety, some safety things, and then ESSA. So I, it's been one of those conversations that it was just, it's an ongoing. We always have questions together. So it kind of ties up in a nutshell, and then, as he said, whatever other comes up, we work that that way. I do want to say something before I wrap up. Your next slide says thank you. For those of you that don't know, I think you all know that Margaret Wallace passed away on March 31st. She spent 20-plus years in this district. She was, when I started 18 years ago, she was the EMIS Secretary of Washington. Then she moved into the special service secretary job. She just was a very quiet, humble person that lived out in Washington Township, and she came and just did her job. And unfortunately, due to health concerns, she got taken away way too early. And I just wanted to make sure I noted that she's just, was just an amazing person, an amazing secretary, you know, and it's, and she's very compliant-driven, which is basically what I need in our office. And I call her a paper tiger. That's what she was. You know, so I just wanted to take a note and thank her for her, her service with our district. Other than that, that's all I have. Board have any questions?
Oh, I have a ton. Why didn't I call you?
It doesn't matter. I'm here. So I just want to give you a quick synopsis. I went a little longer than I wanted. I told them to tie me. I'm curious what it was.
Thank you, Dan. Nice job. Very nice job. Okay, under old business, I put levy discussion. If anyone would like to speak to that.
Well.
Not everybody all wants.
I'm in a bad mood. I don't know that you want.
This is not planned.
Got two weeks to go.
Well, I know. And my, my personal opinion on what goes on is that I'm, as, as a human being, not even as a board member, I am so tired of politics hurting our community, our students, and our staff. And school funding is political, and it is doing so much damage. We have to, we're the, just about the only thing that you can put on a ballot, other than maybe some township levies, that our, our community has the right to vote on. Everything else, the president doesn't ask whether you want your taxes raised or lowered. He just doesn't, because that's what they need. We have to ask, and we have to play politics. And in the meantime, our schools, and our kids, and our staff get hurt. And it's a shame because for 19 years, we have asked for money over and over again, and it's been turned down. And we've been told, we don't want you to make those changes in the schools. We don't want new buildings. Don't close a building, even though it saved a bunch of money. Don't close that building. We've got to have all of these elementaries. We've got to have this. But then nobody wants to fund it, and nobody wants to pay for the things that they want to keep. If you want to keep your car, you're going to have to pay for it. You want to keep your schools and give our kids a quality education and give them a chance to move on in life, it's going to cost us something. And it always costs more than you want to give. I don't like paying taxes. Nobody does. But the bottom line is, people who were retirees paid for your children to have schooling. It's a pay-it-forward thing. It's always been. Is it the way it should be? No. Is, should it have been fixed 20 years ago? Yes. If you want to gripe at somebody, gripe at your legislators, because they're the ones holding it up. They're the ones who haven't made the funding changes and made it equitable for everybody in Ohio. And until that changes, we're stuck in this political system that our kids are victims of. And I just want to ask everybody to please think about that. When you, when you're out there talking against the levy or deciding not to vote for it, talk, think about what you're actually hurting. And it's not that we need all this money because we can't wait to spend it. We're spending hours and have had to bring in experts who've told us, you need the money. You cannot continue to operate and give these kids a solid education. We're not going to even have respectable staff because they're going to go elsewhere. Some of them, some of them are so loyal to us, I'm just incredibly amazed at the people who are willing to stay here when they could make much more money elsewhere. And the trend right now is that a lot of teachers are leaving the profession. It's not worth it to them anymore. So please, think about that when you're thinking about how you're going to vote on this levy. That's, I'm in a bad mood over this.
Well said.
I'd just like to say that, you know, after 19 years of stretching the, the money that we've had from this community, the community's always supported operating levies here at Marlington. And the reality of the situation, Patty is open, you know, an open book on this stuff, is we are in deficit spending. We're half a million dollars in deficit spending. Next year, we're going to be almost $2 million in deficit spending. We don't have that kind of revenue in the bank to continue on that path every year. And we're talking about a major disruption to our ability to educate students and provide services with students if this levy isn't taken seriously by the public. And we'd hate to see a situation where next year, we're 20 teachers short, and all of a sudden, fifth-grade classes have 45 students in them. I don't think there's anybody out there who's going to volunteer to go teach 45 students in one classroom. And that's, that, that's something that we, we just can't ask our teachers to do, but we may have to. And so just, I'd like to ask the community to think very long and hard on what this school district means to them, what it means to have our own independent school district. Because the future, right now, if, if Marlington does not, the Marlington community does not continue to fund the school, then, you know, how long are we going to be able to be a functioning district? And you have to ask yourself those questions. And they're very difficult questions.
Because it is a domino effect. You know, again, the less programs we have, the less students are going to be interested in coming here. You know, that's especially true at the high school level. And, you know, we're seeing, you know, we're taking, we're voting on a resignation tonight from one of the teachers that I feel like has done a lot for Marlington, Mr. Koznicka, at the, at the middle school with technology. And if this is what the kids are needing, not only just wanting, they're needing this, this education. And we're losing these teachers because maybe they think the writing's on the wall. I don't know. I mean, I don't know his, his reasons, but we've lost a lot of teachers in the last two years, and we need this to pass so that there's some stability to that. two years, and we need this to, um, pass so that there's some stability to that.
Well, I'll jump in and add a few. Those are all great points, and historically speaking, I, I've had a, a number of kids come through the district, and you can see, you can see the benefit that Marlington's had on them with the education opportunities. And my fear is, we're going to lose some of those programs, they're just going to start dwindling away, because we can't afford, excuse me, can't afford to keep, keep operating the way we are. So I encourage people to think about that, because it's, we want to maintain a quality education here for the kids that are, that are just starting, you know, starting at the beginning. I've got a, a fourth grader, and I want to see her continue, uh, participating in the programs that the older kids have had. And it's, uh, that, that's my fear, we're going to have to start cutting, and we're already cutting, we're trimming, as, you know, we talked about that last month, some of the things we're doing to, where we can, and it doesn't affect the education process too drastically. So I think we're doing a, a good job in that regard. And, and we're going to continue to do that, even if the levy passes, we're going to still look at areas that can be trimmed back, so we can keep offering the core, what, what are we doing in our core, you know, what, what's our primary business here, is educate our, educate our kids? So, right, and I encourage everybody to think long and hard about that, and it's two weeks
Any other comments?
This doesn't directly have to do with the levy, but it could have some bearing on the levy. Um, I know we've all heard that the, uh, NEXUS appeal has been sent back to the Tax Commission for settlement, and I was just wondering if the board was going to discuss, you know, hypothetically, if we get 75% from where we're at now, if we, if that gets, you know, determined to be 75, 80% for the full amount, you know, what plans does the board have to do with the, the settlement money from NEXUS?
Well, I think that we've got a couple of things, uh, but most importantly, the NEXUS money was, uh, was earmarked for buildings only, you know, for building and capital improvement, and we have about $5.5 million in capital improvement needs around the district. So, you know, that would be the first place we'd go, but that's completely speculative. You know, we could get nothing, we could get the same 35% now. So it's hard to run a district on speculative income. You can't just say, okay, we think this is going to be there, maybe, but not really. You know, we, we, we took that line once before, a couple of years ago with NEXUS, and they're paying out, what, 35, 36%? Oh, 38, okay, 38%. Um, so any plans, I'm just talking, just being conservative here, until that money shows up on the doorstep, I don't think we can count on it for, for anything.
Well, well, the only reason, you know, that I bring it up is that, from last I heard, it's supposed to be decided, the settlement, by the end of the month. Now, if that's going to happen, I don't know, we've heard time and time again, this date, the appeal date, and then it gets, you know, pushed forward. But I'm just saying, that could be at the end of the month, potentially before the levy. I mean, would we hold a special meeting to discuss that at that point, before that, to, you know, clarify what, what, you know? I, I just want to leave it clear to the community what, what's going to happen.
Well, we're asking for an operating levy.
Yes.
We're a service provider, so that pays for our teachers. We have $9.6 million in, in repairs and loan payments for the next five years. So NEXUS is not going to be able to cover all that. There's just no way. So.
It's probably going to keep us out of a bond issue, to be honest, to, you know, we have permanent improvement, I think is a couple mil levy.
Correct.
Um, but I think it's going to, i- if, if it were to come through, it'd keep us from having to go back to the voters and ask them for any more money for bond, um, because we'd have some of it to, to put in, um, to those repairs, especially the roof at the high school and the wastewater treatment plant.
So from what I take, you know, we're going to continue forward with, you know, the repair costs that we've cited, we're going to try to put that money towards those costs.
I think that's something we'll have to decide together.
I mean, we're, we're committed, we got a loan to pay back.
Yeah.
So I, I don't think we have a choice but to keep that as it's going. Now, down the road, you know, we could, we could certainly address it again, but we went over all these numbers last, last month, what was, uh, piling up.
3.5 million for the high school roof alone. I mean, we're, this is a building we're keeping.
And we're just talking repairs now.
Yeah.
We're not even talking repairs, they're going to pop up in six months or a year from now.
Yeah.
Constant.
We have to work with the money we have.
Right.
Not the money we hope to have. We really have to work with what we have. And if we want to continue to keep control of our schools, we've got to do something about it. You know, worst-case scenario, the state comes in, and you don't have choice anymore. They take over, they will tell you what you will pay in taxes, they will cut this school to ribbons, get it down to bare bones, and you won't have any say-so in it at all anymore. Right now, our community has a say-so in it, and the board has a say-so in it. Um, I don't want to take that away. I, I don't want to do that. Other, it, talk to, talk to a district where it's happened.
We, uh, I talked to Patty and Kathy right before the meeting, there will be a finance committee in May after the levy, so hopefully it's a positive meeting at that point, and I'm sure some of those issues you're bringing up will be addressed, and then the whole, the whole board will be apprised of that.
Okay.
But, you know, I think, you know, the point you made, Jonathan, about the NEXUS money, if it does come in, this point, it's for repairs.
We can pay the credit card bill.
I, I just, you know, I just want the discussion to be out there, so people don't, you know, if that comes in at the end of the month.
As far as I know, we've been discussing it since January.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying that, you know, people need to know what, what that's going towards, because that can have a huge impact on whether people.
I don't think we're hiding anything from anybody.
And there's a big question right.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying.
There is a big question right now at the commission, when it goes back to the Tax Commission, are they going to, um, one side wants the outcome to be a rollback, so that what they've paid us till now, they are paying, they go back to paying 100% of it. But that's very unlikely to pass and get through the negotiation process. So, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, 35% that we've gotten so far, that's all the money we're going to get, we're not going to get back tax on it. You know, so at least, we can't plan for that either.
Could I just add one quick thing? And this is, you know, I'm a teacher at heart, so this is kind of being a teacher, and one thing I always try to, everywhere I go, talk to people about is, we, we either have to increase our revenue or decrease our spending, and we don't increase our revenue when the county auditor raises property taxes in it, in a reevaluation. And we think everybody knows that, but it seems like everybody doesn't know that. The only way we can really increase revenue is with the levy, that's the way it works in Ohio, unfortunately. So, um, and the little line that you see on your tax bill that says schools, we don't get all of that money. We call that phantom revenue. Where does it go? I don't know, ask your legislator. So I always try to, you know, at those holiday parties and summer picnics, remind people when they bring it up, you know, we don't automatically get that increase. We get funded by the, what I call the butts in the seats, kids that enroll. So.
So when properties are assessed at a higher value, we're not getting more money.
Yeah, correct.
Bottom line. It's, it might seem like we're getting more money, but we are not.
Right. That's part of the whole crux of the lawsuits that went to the Supreme Court, the Deroff case, part of it, that's part of it.
Good point, thank you. Okay, new business.
All right, let me get my computer. Okay, I have for you the ESC contract, Dan mentioned it earlier. We do contract with the ESC for, um, many things, their support network for us for many things, and I have their contract there for you. Uh, the lion's share of that 189-some thousand is preschool, and I'll just take a quick moment to say, in my professional opinion, preschool is absolutely one of the most important things that you can do for your community. Because not all kids get read to at home, not all kids have the home that would, that is an educational help. So, um, and if you have any questions, the rest of it goes for a lot of the services they provide for us, uh, that other 50,000, and that's pretty much it in a nutshell. They help us a lot, they're great support.
So is there a motion to recommend to approve the contract for the ESC?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0.
The next contract I have for you is a technology contract, and this contract is, has to do with internal connections. Ben was not able to be here tonight, but I think mainly Patty or I could answer questions that you have on this. The majority of this will be paid with our E-Rate fundings, uh, but if you have specific questions, Patty's pretty versed on this one.
So is there a motion to approve the contract with Lake Tech for 2022 E-Rate eligible services as seen in Exhibit B?
So moved.
Or second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Patty, could you just, you, you sent me an email answering a question, I, could you just say, talk about that in a nutshell, if you don't mind?
I can. Um, this is, like Dr. Mike said, um, partially paid with E-Rate, um, and yearly, we get support through the E-Rate, um, Ben heads that off and, and works with, um, then to, them to do the application. Um, this is, is a platform for our internet and our connectivity and our connectivity points, and, um, this is how we manage those. And as you know, our connectivity has doubled, at least, um, in the past couple of years, as well as our connectivity points. Um, so we're just, uh, we're very fortunate to get this support from the E-Rate, um, as other schools.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0.
Uh, just a word about the new elementary math curriculum. The committee has, uh, looked at the materials, they spent a lot of time and examined the research, and they've chosen a math curriculum. And Mrs. Kaylee is finishing up spring break tonight, so she's not with us, but Mrs. Kaylee and I would like to, if you would like to come in and take a look at the curriculum, um, look through it, if you'd like the specific questions, Renee's really the one, she really led this piece, so she can answer your questions. If you'd like a curriculum committee meeting, uh, before the next board meeting, however you would like to do it, and then we will, um, actually, I will ask you to vote on the curriculum at the May board meeting. A lot of hard work went into choosing this, and, um, several, not all Stark County, uh, is using, it's called Envision Math, but, um, a good, InVision, with an E in Vision. Um, and it, it all, it's always nice when the one you pick is also the most economical, just turned out that way, they were close, and this is a K to 5 math initiative.
Do we want to have a mini-meeting? Do we think that would be, would you like to do that?
Yeah, I'd feel comfortable if it went through committee.
Okay, we'll schedule that.
We'll schedule, no worries. And then, uh.
Do we need a motion to table this, or no?
Yeah, I don't need, we don't need a vote tonight.
Okay.
This new business, we're not voting on it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and then I have there for you the Enviroscapes contract, they take care of our, um, lawn maintenance for our elementary schools in the summer. Um, remember some time ago, the district, um, when the guy that did all the mowing and all that retired, uh, we felt it was more economical to go this route. So they were great for us last year, they don't mow when it doesn't need mowed, they go on a per-mowing basis, they provide us our mulch. So I'm, I'm happy to recommend them again, uh, to be our summer, uh, crew for the elementary schools.
Is there a motion to recommend approving the contract as seen in Exhibit C for Enviroscape?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did this require, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jonathan.
Go ahead, Mark.
Did this require a bid, or was it just?
Quote, quote.
A quote, just a quote?
Yeah.
It was, um.
It's under 50?
It was bid out last year, and with the option to renew for two years, we did get additional quotes to make sure that it was still the most economical, um, way of going.
Has it gone up in comparison to last year?
Um, I would have to check for sure, but it's, um, about equivalent to what it was last year, depending on how many, um, times they have to accommodate service.
Right, right.
Any other discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0.
Treasurer's agenda.
Thank you. First item on the agenda are the minutes from last month, March 16th.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the following meeting of March 16th, 2022?
So moved.
Second, I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0. The second item on Treasurer's agenda are the financial reports, which include, first, the cash reconciliation, um, as you can see, we balance for the month, the next, and the FIN sum, which gives you the balances of each account, as well as, um, the check register.
Is there a motion to approve the financial reports and overview, overview of receipts and expenditures for the period ending March 31st, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Want to highlight things?
Thank you. I would like to highlight, um, on the third, on the check register, I always like to highlight, um, some of the funds from the ESR. On the very last page, I haven't highlighted here, the very last page, you will see part of our nursing, um, with the check number 137912, that comes out of the ESR fund. And if you have any other questions?
The permanent improvement money went up, is that, did we transfer money into that?
I'm sorry, Phil.
The permanent improvement, uh, the unencumbered balance is higher than it was last month? Did we transfer money in?
It is for the, you'll probably see the buses on there, I mean.
Uh, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0. The next item are revenue and budget revisions, and we have just one adjustment on both of
Okay, is there a motion to approve the revenue and budget revisions as presented in Exhibits H and I?
So moved.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
The adjustment is a safety grant that we received for $10,482.14. That applies to the full revenue expenses.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass, five zero. The last one are the donations for the month. We had a...
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion to accept and approve the donations as seen in Exhibit J? So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
We, I, we have a donation from Darryl Hammond at $400 for the horticulture, and also a donation from the University of Mountain Union for $250 for the purchase of some stationary bicycles.
Thank you very much.
She was 100 on there. She said 400.
You meant, you meant 100.
100, did I say, I, I'm sorry.
Darryl's like, what?
I like donations, so 100.
It's coming out of your pants.
A check wasn't what I thought it was.
All the guys for that.
Almost said goodbye.
That's okay, keep saying, go ahead, yeah, nice.
Just change that one to a four, he said.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
With our thanks. Personnel.
Good evening again. I have two personnel items. We can, if it's okay with you, vote a one vote. They're both the same person. I am recommending that you approve the resignation of Tyler Kwaznikah, middle school teacher, and then Tyler is also our strength and conditioning coordinator. And I just want to say Tyler has been a driving force, as Mrs. Humphries said, not only in technology, but in fitness, especially for kids that are not athletes. So he will be, he will be missed. We wish him the best, and he will be missed.
Is there a recommendation, is there a motion to approve the following certified resignation as shown in Exhibit K, Tyler Kwaznikah, effective the end of the current school year?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
The next Board of Education meeting will be held on May 19, 2022, at 7:00 PM, right here in the high school DLZ. And is there a motion for the Marlington Local School District Board of Education to recess into executive session pursuant to revise Code 121.22 G1 to consider the employment or evaluation of a public employee in preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees, and G5 for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, federal rules, or state statutes. All matters discussed in this executive session are designated to the public officials and employees as confidential pursuant to revise Code 102.03B because of the status of the proceedings and/or the circumstances under which the information will be received, and preserving its confidentiality is necessary to the proper conduct of government business. Following executive session, no action is expected.
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
Time in at 7:52 PM.
Okay, we're declared out of executive session at 9:02 PM. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moot.
Second. Pick whoever you want.
Well Kathy, you did the last one so we'll say Josh.
No process.
All right.
I was first.
Motion by Jonathan, second by Josh.
Sorry.
Call the roll please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mrs. Creppico?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass, five zero.
Thank you, and good night.
Good night.
Great.
May, I'm just warning you, May's gonna be really long. Double presentations, all the contracts.